Okay. All right, welcome to the Litchfield Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 23rd, 2014. We'll start with the rise of pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the boards is coming out of a paperwork review. Next item on the agenda is review of items for consent. In the consent folder for this evening, we have the minutes from June 9th. We have accounts payable manifest for $129,229. We have payroll manifest for $44,276.92. We have one elderly exemption application approval. We have one elderly exemption application denial. We have an abatement for map 22, law 82. We have confirmation to DRA not using PA 28, taxpayer inventory blank for 2015. We have an elderly exemption recertification for one and civil forfeiture for unlicensed dogs. Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Lemire, seconded by Mr. Bork. Discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries 4-0-0. All right, next is items for, request for items or other business. Anybody have anything they want to add to the agenda or topics we want to discuss? Hearing none, the agenda is as the agenda is. All right, next is review guidance from council. Jason, I don't know if you want to read it because it's all...
I'm happy to, I guess, though first I want to clarify that the board wants to release this information from council.
Right, so the topic is around, there's been a lot of discussion between the Budget Committee and this board regarding the use of multi-year leases and the legality of multi-year leases. It's a practice we've been doing for quite a few years. We did go out and seek legal opinion. My intent is to ask the board's commission to release this to the Budget Committee. And, you know, in essence, have it right into the minutes of the meeting anyway. And I'm assuming there, you know, we've kind of talked about it, I'm assuming there's no objections to doing that. If not, if there is, let me know, but...
I'll make a motion to release to the public the opinion of councils concerning the purchase of items on contractual basis.
Second.
Okay, motions were made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor for releasing the council opinion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries 4-0-0. So Jason, what's, why don't we walk through the questions we asked and the answers we received and...
Okay. Now, what we sent to council said, "Some questions have arisen around the Board of Selectmen's ability to make payments on lease purchases entered into in prior years. We are trying to provide some clarification on these questions. In situations where a mid-year purchase occurs for equipment replacement, i.e. highway department equipment, police vehicles, copiers, et cetera, does the Board of Selectmen have the ability to enter into multi-year leases with a non-appropriation clause?" From council, "It is our opinion that yes, as long as the selectmen have adequate funds in the budget, they can enter into a lease purchase agreement with a non-appropriation clause mid-year." C R S A 337E. DRA takes the position the town meeting approval should be sought because of the town doesn't know about the lease and the non-appropriation clause, how can it not appropriate? If a capital item is purchased on a non-appropriation contract and the subsequent year the proposed budget passes, followed by a few years later, the town operates on a default budget, while the item's dead is still being paid off, does that require the town to consider the item no longer has an appropriation and the lease terminated? From council, "No, unless the lease is specifically non-appropriated, i.e. there's a specific warrant article on that item which is defeated or the line item is zeroed out, the lease remains a contract obligation of the town which is payable under the default budget. And if the town tried to take the position that the non-appropriation clause was triggered, I believe it would lose." If a non-appropriation contract item must be turned into the vendor, what is the timing of this return? For example, the town votes in March and a non-appropriation event happens, when must the town turn in the capital item? Immediately, when feasible, before year-end, et cetera. Remember, the town has already three months, paid three months of expense in the current fiscal year. What must be done with the expenses already paid by the town in the current fiscal year when the non-appropriation event happens? From council, "The answer to this depends on the terms of the lease agreement." If a non-appropriation event happens outside of a no means no warrant article situation, can the Board of Selectmen immediately cut a contract for, a new contract for replacement item? For example, if the current police cruisers must be returned, could the Board of Selectmen approve a new contract for other cruisers under RSA 337E? If the board can't do a new contract for cruisers, are the Board of Selectmen prevented from enacting any new contracts for any items? The town could probably do this under state law. However, almost all lease purchase agreements provide that if there is a non-appropriation event, the town cannot spend funds on a similar item during at least that fiscal year. Doing so would, probably would result in liability to the town. If a non-appropriation event occurs, again, outside of a no means no situation, can the Board of Selectmen fund items through their authorization granted under RSA and in various court cases by the shifting of funds? Yes. Under RSA 4013, the default budget is defined as, default budget as used in this subdivision means the amount of the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous year reduced and increased, as the case may be, by debt service contracts and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget. For the purpose of this paragraph, one-time expenditures shall be appropriations not likely to recur in succeeding budget as determined by the governing body unless provisions of RSA 4014B are adopted of the local political subdivision. This definition states the default budget is an appropriation and goes on to state that if no operating budget is adopted, the local political subdivision either shall have been deemed to have approved the default budget. These two sections combined infer that the default budget is an approved appropriation. Does this satisfy the requirement for RSA 337E to have an approved appropriation for continuing a purchase? From council, yes. In testimony presented to the legislature during, testimony on RSA 337E, a question was asked how this would be handled in SB 2 municipalities. The response was that the contract appropriation will be contained within the default budget. Does this indicate an intention of the legislature that contracts be continued if a default budget happens? Yes. Under the authority granted a town under 3110 for emergency borrowing, it states in part, "When allowed, towns may incur indebtedness and issue notes for temporary loans other than loans in anticipation of taxes, in any case where monies belonging to them are lost or rendered unavailable through any default suspension of payment or other casualty." Would this allow the town to borrow for cruisers or other capital equipment? I have never used this provision, but it seems as if it could be used if the default budget rendered the lease agreements non-appropriated, which it does not.
Okay. So, as you saw, there was a variation of course questions that came out based on our discussion, so I think we covered all of these, we covered all the questions we've heard to date. So based on our original motion, I'd like to have this bundled up and sent to the Chair of the Budget Committee.
Sure.
And you can copy myself and Frank on it. I'll be anticipating next to this meeting, but Frank can open that. Just as another note, I think the last meeting, we also released response from the, we got an opinion on the Budget Committee's role as it relates to the 2014 budget, that was also shared. So, I think we pretty much addressed everything the Budget Committee has asked us to explore and what we've decided to explore ourselves, so. Okay. Any questions? Anything we forgot? All right. Hearing none. Back to my agenda here. Next is administrative report. New business, tax-deeded property.
Tax-deeded property. You may recall that we took a property by tax deed. The owners, previous owners have moved out of the house by the date given them. We've taken care of appropriate security measures. Other than for a lot of scattered trash, the house is in good condition, will benefit from a cleaning. We're taking care of some of the basic provisions that way. Note, too, that time spent on issues related to the property are being logged as potentially reimbursable costs. There is a formula set out under state law, I'll get to that in a second, that allows us to be reimbursed for reasonable costs of, associated with having that property. The next question we have is what our disposition is going to be of this property. Whether we proceed immediately to auction or hold. Recall that the property is held for three years, and during that time, the previous owners don't come back and exercise their right for the past debt costs and penalty. The town retains all of the proceeds from a sale. If it is sold before that, we keep the owed taxes, taxes accrued in the interim and the related costs, and that penalty which is equal to 15% of equalized value. That, at the moment, is about $55,000. I have down at the bottom of this sheet sort of our tracking spreadsheet for that. We have the previous taxes and then the new taxes, and then our costs are, will be itemized on that as well as they come in, so. So that, that will be routinely updated. To give some comparison, the property across the streets on the market for $267,500. Now, and that property is a smaller property. That if we decide to hold it, then we would need to take steps to figure out what are, how we would want to handle that ownership over the intervening period. If we decide to sell, we'll need to engage an auction firm to do so. Terry and I have met with one so far, and there was a vigorous discussion kicked off by wearing his town administrator hat, Selectman Lemire today on the manager's listserv, so I have another good reference for a comparison. When we fix a date to sell, there is, we do have a requirement of a 90-day notice of repurchaseability to the previous owners, so that's sort of the next clock that starts ticking for us. So the soonest we could sell it would be late October, if we could decide to go that way. You know, there's differing views as to what towns do. Some people hold and wait till it clears because of the difference in revenue that comes back for the town. Others want to get it off their books as soon as possible. You know, Terry had passed along some information from the Tax Collectors Association, and, you know, big number, you know, they say 75, 80% hold on the property and keep the proceeds. Now, that's also not a very, that was a casual conversation, not a finely great number. It's one thing when you hold land, it's another thing when you hold a structure. You know, the cost of holding land and managing it is a lot less.
What if we were to knock the house down and just sell the land?
You'd lose a lot of value.
That is true.
A house is actually, a house is, a house is a pretty decent house.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll clean up nice, and, you know, the inside is in, is in, after it's cleaned is in pretty good condition.
So the one that, we were working on, the one that triggered the listserv discussion today, we pulled the trigger on the 90-day notice. We haven't had it, we, actually, we've had it for several years, but there was a squatter there, a whole mess of other issues that we've had to go through, through the courts and everything, and we finally pulled the trigger on the 90-day, which was up in February, so now the property's kind of a mess, but we're going to try to sell it as is and see what we get.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion of the Board of Selectmen hereby states or decides that it will sell the property as soon as feasible.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
I don't feel that it's right that the town should hold somebody's house and therefore accrue the assets of that house for a period of three years. It is not something that I would support doing.
Because you have a liability, too, as long as you...
Well, and, and, and the liability is, while I agree with you, it's, just to me, it's a moral issue. These people have money invested in that house, and they should get back as much as they can. Now that said, I will also make an amendment to the motion that the town will decline to collect the 15% of equalized value as a penalty on the house, and return, and that will go to, of course, back to the owner.
Okay. Do I have a second on the amendment?
I'll second.
Given by Mr. Bork.
Before you go headlong into that, into approving that amendment, I would suggest that we confirm with council whether that 15% is waivable or not. That, that, I've seen a discussion recently amongst my colleagues where some have waived and some have felt that the law says the town shall do so. So, I understand the intent, I just don't want you to bind yourselves tonight and then have to backtrack on it, so I can get that information from council for you.
Okay. So I'll withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to withdraw a second?
Yep.
Further discussion on the motion? So Jason, feasibly, feasible is, we make a, we announce that our intent to sell, we give them 90, before we can put on the market, we give them 90 days to come forward and either pay the debt and take back the ownership of the home, right? And then if they don't, we sell, we get the debt owed plus the 15%, I guess, and they get back the proceeds of the remaining proceeds.
They get back the balance. So, you know, based on my, sort of my rough numbers here, if you sell it for 250, we keep the 50 that is owed to us, and they get the 200. There is, you know, the way that auction company will work is that there's a buyer's premium. The buyer's premium covers the fees of the auction firm in their entirety, so we are not paying any additional fees for auction unless...
There's a couple things, too. You also would collect the cost to maintain the property, keep the property up, and the town's cost.
Right, so all the costs we just did to clean the house out, get it ready for sale, we will recoup all that cost back.
Right, right, and, and we'll have that baked into the number. I think in the notes I gave you, I did have council clarify, you know, what costs means, so we, we are tracking what we need to track there, so.
Okay, further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries 4-0-0. All right.
So just in terms of, in terms of procedure, then, I will, this week, contract with an auction firm. Again, this, you know, on, on the town end, we're not paying the firm any money, so I'm, I will talk to, talk to a couple firms, I'll talk to one more, sort of see what seems to be the best deal, and go on its way. Once I talk to them and make sure that we're good on a date, I will initiate that 90-day clock. I have sort of the template already of the letter that I need to send that meets all the legal requirements for that, and we will get it in motion as quickly as possible.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
So at least the house will be out of our hands by fall.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I have no...
Assuming it sells.
I have no, I have no doubt that it will sell.
Now, there's a, there's a required bid, right? So there's a, there's a set low bid.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's whatever, so assuming it's mark, maybe market and then anything above market.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, our, our interest, of course, is the minimum bid has to cover at least our back taxes and costs.
Right, but we can't go in there and say, "Bid it at 60,000, some by 6,000," and the previous owners get five. I mean, I don't think that's something we can do neither.
We can only recoup our...
I know, we can recoup our costs, I'm just saying, we can't, we can't, we couldn't sell on the market for 60 grand even though the house was...
Well, we could.
We could.
We could. I mean, you've covered the exposure to the taxpayer.
Right.
And that's what our obligation is, is to cover the taxes owed to us, that's why you take a property. So, I find it hard to believe that at auction it would...
No, my guess it'd go for at least the land.
Yeah, it should go for fair, I'm guessing it will go fairly close to reasonable market, less maybe 10%.
No, I think it'll be less than.
But...
Okay. All right, moving on, next is, moving to other items, county budget.
County budget. Oh, sorry, this is, the, why do I not have?
Do you have an issue?
Yeah, yeah, I do. I had something much more interesting written up about county budget than this. The county budget was approved last week, and it does, the, I think I, the calculation I did showed about a $40,000 to $50,000 increase being passed through to what we pay as accounting.
Total towns or just Litchfield?
Us, us, when you reallocate out by percentage, based on last year's percentage, and I apologize because I had a really nice chart with all of that written up on it, and I think it meant an increase in our tax rate of another three or four cents, I think four cents. So, I'm not sure if your representative to the county delegation wants to add anything else on that.
Is that four cents per thousand?
Yeah.
Sometimes what county does for us, I guess. I really don't, I want to see what they do. Okay. Do you have anything else?
There was an effort to try and knock that down by adding an additional $500,000 into the monies to go against taxes, but unfortunately, that motion was defeated, all pretty much along party lines. The other thing that you should be aware of is the county taxes went up approximately 5% last year, and now going up approximately 4% this year, and, which means we've got a total of about 9%, where over the course of two years, the county taxes have gone up, so.
Let me see, what did I do again? Okay. Anything else on that topic, Jason?
No.
All right. Next, cruiser accident. I just, I know I sent out an email the, either the day or the evening of the accident with the picture, and didn't notify the board there was no injuries, other than pride, but...
Right. I just wanted to follow up since that communication went out between meetings. The estimate for repair was $4,126.44, and Property Liability Trust has sent us the check for $3,126.44, so less our deductible. And, you know, they turned that around fairly quickly after they made it out on site.
Do we, do we know when the car will back?
I don't, I don't, and I didn't get a chance, I was going to ask the chief today, and we just didn't connect on that, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, just a question on deductibles. So we got a $1,000 deductible?
Yep.
Yep.
What's the variation in cost of the insurance, do you know, if we change the deductible?
I don't know, and part of that is, I'm not sure that they offer, I think that, I've never seen them offer anything but a $1,000 deductible, so it's not like sort of a consumer product that you buy, that's sort of their standard. I can, I can ask, but I'm pretty sure that I've always seen a $1,000 deductible both with property liability and with Primex.
Yeah. I thought we asked that question a while ago, a couple years ago, anyway.
Yeah, we...
It's come up before, I remember what, what context.
And I thought it was, I thought the savings, there was no, you know, no savings or it wasn't an option or something.
I'm pretty, I'm going to guess it's not an option, but I, but no harm in asking.
Let's find out for the next meeting, it's probably worth it. All right, legislative wrap-up.
Legislative wrap-up. Share with you some slides from an NHMA webinar on the completed legislative session. There will likely be some greater detail. If you know, if you recall, kind of midsummer, they publish their reference book of all of the laws that have changed for the year, and then we sort of go and make sure all the right departments see those, and that jumpstarts the list for potential warrant articles if there's been enabling legislation, say that was sort of the genesis of the, shall we serve alcoholic drinks to 1 a.m. from last year? Couple things just to flag on there, you know, and again, there'll be more detail if you haven't seen them yet. HB 1210 introduces some new noticing challenges for planning board proposed zoning amendments. Under certain conditions, they will be required to send notice to everybody in a proposed, in an, in an area that has a proposed zoning amendment for it, so that will increase their operating costs. SB 236 changes the deadline for the Budget Committee to deliver a budget to Selectmen, and also clarifies that Selectmen and Budget Committee can vote on recommending operating budget warrant article if amended at the deliberative session. It, it was one of those things, you know, sort of mechanically, people have tap danced around, add a dollar, subtract a dollar, kind of thing, so, and this also makes it clear that they can change a recommendation. SB 271 allows a moderator to begin processing absentee ballots two hours after the polls open, rather than having to wait until 1 o'clock. However, the moderator needs to post notice of time processing will begin at the polling place and one other public location at least 24 hours in advance. So, in the lead-up to this year's elections, we'll confirm with the moderator and add that to the pre-election repertoire that we have. HB 1350 increases to $10,000 from $5,000, the threshold amount for a required public hearing on Selectmen's acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated funds. I, I haven't checked yet to see, I know it's effective 60 days after passage, I've got to see when that's actually passed, when we come back and kind of clean that up and it's eligible. I think you guys had a policy of under 5,000 anyway, so we'll want to revisit that if we want to stay aligned with state law.
Stay aligned, yep. Anybody else?
No, just, it's a, it's a good snapshot read if you're curious as to what else may have happened this session from a local government perspective.
Okay. Next item is NHMA policy process.
NHMA policy process, another, some more light reading that I'd recommend over the next few weeks. The, the three policy committees have finalized their recommendations, and they're attached, if you follow the link through that posting I put together. If there's something missing that we want to submit a floor proposal, that needs to be in by late, mid-August, and it needs to be approved by the majority vote of the governing body. The policy conference is at the end of September, so we'll, as we've done previous years, we need to appoint somebody to be our voting delegate to that, and if the board has any specific directions, provide them to that delegate prior to the 26th. So, basically, no immediate action, but look through and review what's out there, the recommendations.
Who's our delegate now?
Who did we, who did we send, did we send you last year? We sent either...
Well, Frank, you were there, right, the last time?
I was there as a member of the CGA.
Right.
Okay, and I'm there anyway.
And you're there anyway, so...
We probably should clarify who's going to be there.
Well, yeah, I think...
Yeah, so we can have somebody vote on behalf of the town, so...
Right. Yeah, we can discuss.
Right, I mean, we have some time, we have some time between now and then to do that, but yes, as you, in terms of the policy recommendations, you can also may recall that both Frank and I served on the Finance and Revenue Policy Subcommittee, so. So that will come back in a... So that will come back in a future meeting.
All right, next is, uh, pavement.
Uh, yeah, we'll do pavement striping machine, then we'll go to public input. Uh, pavement striping machine.
Pavement striping machine, um, the, uh, I wanted to, uh, pass along, we've been looking at some different ways to, you know, could we save money over the long run? So Jack, one of the things that Jack's looking at is acquiring a pavement striping machine. Um, after looking at costs of over ten thousand dollars annually for painting fog lines, center lines, stop bars, crosswalks, parking lots. Um, it appears payback for owning a machine is rather fast. Uh, last year's stop lines, crosswalks, miscellaneous words and arrows cost us about forty-four hundred hours. Parking lot striping has also been several thousand. Um, our thought is to bring the lot striping and road markings other than center lines and fog lines in-house. Um, this is a more manageable workload, probably not more than three workdays to go through all of those. Remaining lines would still be contracted, uh, it's the approach that Hudson takes, they do the small stuff and contract out the big stuff. Um, based on the equipment recommendations we've seen from neighboring communities that are doing this type of machine, Jack would recommend is about fifty-six hundred, fifty dollars. Um, then with an initial setup cost for some of the things like reusable stencils and a couple nozzles, uh, would add about a thousand dollars to the price. Uh, it should mean in future years, striping budget could be reduced, um, as a portion will be contracted and a portion would just require the purchase of paint, paint which is about seventy dollars a gallon to cover three hundred and eighty feet. Um. So, um. The, uh, you know, what, what we would be looking at in the best possible world is that, you know, we would probably be spending somewhere in the vicinity of six thousand dollars or so for, um, fogs and centers each year. And then, uh, the balance for us would be, um, the, the cost of paint. Um, so it's, so hopefully we could get what has been over ten or, you know, where we budgeted at ten down to eight or less. Um.
So we would purchase the strip machine year one, that's six thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
And then the year, year after year cost would be labor and supplies?
Be labor and supplies, and at some point, you know, a couple hundred bucks for this nozzle or that nozzle, kind of thing. Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a walk behind machine, I, it, it bangs out the parking lots quickly, I mean, I, I saw part of the demonstration here, it was great. Um, we, you know, I, I could paint this parking lot, um, you know, it, it doesn't make s- I could, um.
Only if you walk straight line.
It, it, it holds you straight, um, you know, it, it just, it's, it's a walk behind, it doesn't make sense to be doing, you know, the center lines on Albuquerque with it.
Oh, right, right, yes, right.
So, um, the proposal is not to increase any personnel costs, right? Or hours?
No, thi- this is.
So there really isn't a personnel cost. It's only a paint cost. If you're going to do it in-house with existing personnel within their existing job scope, then that can't be considered a cost. You can cost out what they do, that added, it's an added function, right?
It's not a new cost, but I'm, I'm using them on that project instead of some other project, so there's sort of an implied cost.
I mean, I, I would just say the implied cost is that they may eventually, they may potentially get a, you know, a college kid to do it and pay.
Sure, no, no, I was looking at if there's an increased cost.
There, there has to be an increased cost, if you, unless you've got full-time personnel and you don't have them fully occupied, there's an increased cost. Because there's part-time personnel that you're using to do the striping. There has to be an increased cost.
I do believe that there's, you know, forty hours over a period of a summer of labor associated with all those po- all the lines. And that's, to me, that's a, that's a college kid that he hires anyways to doing odd stuff around the place anyhow.
So how much money am I expecting, if you're saying that we got a cost for fog lines and all the other painting that we do in town, road painting, highway painting, whatever you want to call it, ten thousand dollars or, or more, I don't know what the number is, what are we saving?
Um, you know, I, I would say that the first year I'd take the ten we budgeted down to eight. Um, I'm, we may be able to save more than that, what, until you're out there doing it, I don't want to overpromise on how much paint, how far the paint goes and.
So you're, you're, so rough numbers, you're talking about two thousand dollars that you're gonna spend, that you're gonna avoid, cost avoid.
Mm-hmm.
And you're gonna have to spend seven thousand dollars to capture that. So your return on investment is at least three and a half years.
Or sooner if it works out the ways, the way Jack was thinking, but.
You're right, yeah, I mean, 'cause, well, the, the, the other way to, you know, y- you can slice the numbers a couple of different ways. You can argue it that way, or I can, I can say, if I pay forty-four hundred hours a year for stop lines, cross, crosswalks and miscellaneous words and arrows.
We remove that completely from the budget.
That, that's, no, no, it's removed.
But, but why are you not taking it out of the budget if you're saying that that's gonna be done?
Because I still have to buy paint. I still have to buy paint, so until we get through a season of actually doing it, I don't want to come in and paint the rosy scenario of, oh yeah, sure, you'll save four grand, and then come back next year and be trying to explain why we saved two grand. Um, I think the savings will be greater, but until we get the experience, I don't want to bank that savings.
The, the last question I have is, where the heck are we gonna find the money to do this?
In the road striping, in the road striping budget that's there now.
So you're gonna take seven thousand dollars out of the road striping budget now? You've only got ten thousand, as you said in here.
Mm-hmm.
So what is he gonna do this year? He's gonna start striping this year?
We're gonna strip, pick up some of these other stripes this year.
I thought they've already been around with doing lines now.
They, they've done some, they haven't done all of them, what we, we've kind of stretched where we didn't have to do lines, we haven't done lines yet.
Do we know what we've paid out so far for those lines? I'm, I'm looking at forty-four hundred dollars is what we say the total cost of all these lines we're talking about. If we've already paid half of it this year.
We ha- we haven't put out that much yet, hold on a second.
Man, I'm, I'm personally in favor of doing it in-house if we can do it in-house, but the, the numbers aren't working out for me.
We've spent four hundred and ninety-five dollars out of that ten thousand dollar line so far.
Well, I know they've been stripping, so we can't have all the bills in, because.
Right.
You know, I, some big words I'm putting.
I guess my concern is that, I mean, if we, if we have seven thousand dollars spent on a new, new machine, why is it in the budget?
Don't, because we, we don't.
Because we haven't struck, contract striked.
We haven't contract striked yet, he's holding off contract striping by getting this machine and doing the majority of it himself.
Right, I mean.
Which means you're expecting, you're expecting at least six thousand dollars of that budget to be consumed by normal striping.
If we do normal, you know, ni- normal fogs, yeah, I mean, the, the issue we had was based on last year's forty-four hundred hour of crosswalks, stops, parking, all of the miscellaneous things. Saying, is there, you know, that was the point of entry to say, does it make sense to keep spending this each year?
You know, I, I personally, I mean, I think it makes sense from a perspective of cost decreasing and stuff like that, but I'm of the opinion, and I agree with John, that I, I'm, the numbers aren't, you know, clicking for me here, something's not adding up. And I guess what my thinking would be is defer this until the budget and have this come through as a budget article. Um, I'm not saying warrant or whatever, I'm just saying, bring it into the upcoming two thousand fifteen budget.
How often does he do striping?
Every year, right, doesn't he?
Uh.
All across, all across, well, all that, you know, every year?
It should be annually.
I think he rotates every other year.
The, there are places where you can rotate some parts out, or you rotate, you don't have to, you don't have to do all of the fogs or all of the centers, um, crosswalks, you know, stop bars, um, you know, and, and, and that was the thing is, you know, the, the, if we did everything full-fledged every year, we're probably looking at fifteen, sixteen thousand. You know, so we've locked in this ten thousand dollar number the past couple of years, and so part of that has come from, okay, we'll nip and tuck more than we might otherwise do.
So everything's being done at least every two years, correct?
Yeah, it should be, yes. Um, so yeah, that's, that's the thing is, you know, the belt's been tightened a little bit the past couple of years, you know, the real number is probably, and so I got, I guess when you ask why aren't the numbers adding up? If we did everything every year, we're probably closer to fifteen, we've artificially called it ten.
When he, when he, when I saw him and he talked about it, I, I thought he mentioned fifteen thousand dollars a year, what it takes to do the whole town. And of that was a portion of the lines he's talking about pulling out of the budget by doing it himself.
Right.
Just the math and the current budget and what you're suggesting doesn't seem to add up.
It, no, and, well, because the past two years, we haven't used real numbers, we've locked it at ten, and Jack said, I'll make do with ten. And so we've stretched more than we would stretch, so, you know, um.
See, I, I, I hate to not get him a piece of equipment that'll help us save money in the long run, but the number's just not working.
Mr. Chair, and, and I do agree that the process or the program has merit. But I think I'm, the more I think this through, I would like to see it as a budget process where we can get some harder figures, where we can get how many walks, how many feet, the whole nine yards, I think I'd like to just see that. And certainly we could, i- if it, if it would, um, result in an increase in that line item with the figures that we have, then we might be better off at that point recommending an increase.
Yeah.
Then for next year, when we have the entire year, bring it in-house and use the figures that we had that we were able to vet during the budget process.
Yeah, I mean, just take it off the print set, I, I, it would be really interesting to understand what it actually costs to do these lines every year, and not the fictitious that we've created.
Right, yeah.
And certainly Jack works well in the, well, well within those limitations. But how much, how much does it cost to actually do all this striping? Let's remove the fog lines and center lines, because of the long run, with the parking lot, sand streets, the stop signs, whatever, crosswalks.
And, and does he have them in sections, in other words, does he rotate them, you know, like, uh, appraising, you know, is, does he do certain amount this year and then go every other, and there are sections of town that might be able to easily go two years. Uh, but still keep it safe, I, I just think that would be.
The other side too is, and I, I did mention it to Jack when, when he brought it to me, is that there is a labor cost. And whether it can be, whether it can be carried with him, the current two folks are there all the time doing the work, which is Jack and, and Les. Or whether he uses the summer help he gets in for doing the mowing and stuff, and they start doing those a lot, and it's, it's still, there is an increase in cost, it's small in comparison. And I do think the long run is it would be a savings. Um, but I, I think everybody else, we, we need to see the, we need to see the numbers.
So, look, last year we painted a hundred and thirty-five stop bars at eighteen dollars a stop bar for two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. We paid twenty-five crosswalks at fifty dollars a crosswalk, five hours at twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five crosswalks?
Twenty-five crosswalks.
We've got that many in this town?
We have twenty-five crosswalks.
Yeah, probably.
Uh, five.
It's a lot just on Albuquerque, if you think of Albuquerque.
Why, we may have invested most of our on Albuquerque.
Uh, one only, one school, fourteen stop words. So, um, that was forty-four hundred and sixty-five dollars last year.
Now, the question is out of that, what, what was still, you know, was that half the, half of the, was that what's left to do, or is that all of them?
I, that, that would have been, that should have been all of the, all of the stops and crosses, I think.
So then, yeah, okay.
Because I, I, I think what the theory there was is we had fewer, uh, centers and fogs to do. So, um, you know, those are.
I think what's, we hear, we're supportive in doing it, but it may, it may be better with the current budget restrictions we already have, it's still, I mean, I grade it seven thousand dollars, but still seven thousand dollars right now. And we have cruiser issues, and we have all these other issues, and we have a pending splinter coming that we don't know it's gonna look like. We're better off putting it into.
White and snow, white and, white.
Question is, when will it start and how long will it last?
Um. January first is silent view.
Yeah, me too. Um, but I think having Jack lay out exactly what would entail, what that schedule looks like, and what the linear feed is and, and the labor associated with, so we, we get a big picture. No doubt, in my mind, we'll save money. And I, and I think the recruit is more than, it's shorter than three years, like you're thinking too, but I think we need to see the big picture.
Okay.
All right. Any other, any other commenter thoughts on this topic?
All right. Moving on, we're a little late for public input, but, um, I will open the floor for public input at six forty-four.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chris Paschke. Uh, thank you, I started off first, something I wasn't thought of planning on speaking about was the, uh, line stripper. Thank you for holding off. This is an issue that, you know, remember, nobody in this room, me or anybody here is an expert on everything. So, something like this, it's important, let it go through the budget process, have some conversations about it. I know striping pretty intimately, uh, I've done it for years. Uh, Mr. Pernell, he said no doubt could be a savings, it probably will, but it could take twenty years. Um, there's a lot of the little things, you don't want to carry that machine to people, get it up and down the back of the pickup truck. So you really need a trailer with a rear ramp.
Which we already own, so.
Okay, and then you obviously need a vehicle to tow it from, obviously, each and each spot, which now a vehicle will be off the road. Uh, when you said, uh, the, the, so stop bars eighteen dollars a piece, that's a very reasonable rate for a little profit margin in that for whoever's doing it. If you think about the labor, setup, breakdown, cost of paint, the private companies they buy, the paints by tractor trailer loads, or even with your municipal discount. Uh, there's no doubt, um, a line stripper's getting the paint for less money. Um, you don't have to do parking lots every year, you don't even necessarily have to do them every other year, it could be every three years. Unless you get it seal coated, if you get it seal coated, we don't own a seal coating machine, whoever does that striping is included with the seal coating. Um, you know, so my, my opinion, um, which I'm offering right now, would be keep it the way it is. Uh, it, it, there is a cost of labor. Um, I think you guys are adequate in saying we don't have people standing around doing nothing, so we do have to hire people, so it is gonna be an additional cost, so. And striping works in a very minimal profit margin as it is. Uh, the machine takes a lot of maintenance, a lot of gas, gets a lot of moving parts, has to be properly winterized, winterized every winter. Stored properly away from other things, it's a delicate machine, you don't want to bang it around. Um, you need a place to store it. Uh, overall, I think we have a good deal now, and a small town like this shouldn't be bringing more stuff in, I think we should, uh, keep it the way it is. I want to, uh, the reason why I wanted to talk today was about the road agent. Um, you know, going back, uh, the RSA, uh, the way it stands now says the board of selectmen had, uh, and has had and always will have the right to appoint a road agent at any time, in other words, take the right away from the voter to choose whatever road agent you want at any time without approval from the voter. So you always had that right as per RSA, which meant, uh, realistically, you didn't need to even create this warrant to, uh, take, creating a road agent. I know, uh, Mr. Byron does have that RSA, um, that, that does state that. Um, so that was always there. Uh, I know part of, uh, and I can't quote the RSA now, I have a copy of it at home, but it says that. Um, I know part of the reasoning or rationale for, uh, you know, during deliberative for wanting to, uh, um, give the right and, and power to the board of selectmen to appoint the road agent was because, um, he used the example, we had a road agent in the past that, yeah, some colleague wasn't doing the job well enough, and that may, may not be true. But I, I, if I believe correctly, I believe that person, that road agent was appointed by the board of selectmen originally. And then it was, um, uh, voted in by the voters after, but it was, position became open, and that road agent was appointed at that time. So, probably worth checking the records. Um, at the deliberative, um, it was, uh, well, I had asked a question, I asked it, Mr. Pernell, do you not trust the voters to make the decision anymore, um, to vote in a road agent? And you said that, yeah, you trust the voters, but you'd not necessarily trust them to make the right decision, because, um, you know, they could use personality or somebody they like, they could, they could vote in, maybe not vote in the qualified person. So then the discussion turned into, um, how important it is for you guys to go through the process to appoint a road agent. That you could look outside the town, you could open up the pool, just like you did for the fire chief, you know, you immediately after that, you look for a fire chief and you hire somebody out of town, and the current elected fire chief, you like, you know, you said, your term's done when it's done. Uh, 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 somebody spoke up, uh, at the podium and said they didn't even realize how important the road agent position was until you guys told them how important it was, so that person was for giving you the control. Um, another person spoke up and said that someday, he pointed to you folks, said you're all gonna dwindle away, um, not be around anymore, so you need to put a process in place or else the whole system will collapse when it comes to the road agent. And, well, you got it, it's, it's now your system, to put a good system in place. The moderator, Mr. Regan, said, um, you know, he, the way he understood it, and he said during that meeting was at the five board of selectmen, we're gonna use your expertise and certain hiring criteria and, and processes to weed through everybody and pick the absolute best person for the job. Now, just to be clear, I, I want and always wanted and always. Now, just to be clear, I want, and always wanted, and always did vote, and would have continued to vote for Jack as the road agent, because I think he's the best, I think that's what the town really wanted. Problem is, my opinion doesn't matter anymore. Neither does everybody else in the town. They don't have a choice anymore. You guys have the choice. And when you were speaking at the last meeting, you were now going the other way, you're saying the road agent part of the job description is a very, very tiny part, is what you were saying, of what that person does. And, so I was concerned, because you guys, at least, I'm gonna say you have to, but clearly, you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it, but when I say have to, I mean you should, because you went through a lot of trouble to get this on the ballot. It was attempted to be on the ballot a couple times before, and was pushed back, and you got it on. And you fought for it, and you fought real hard for it, and there was a lot of pushback, even from the voter, I mean, you won by three, really two, if two people switched, you would have lost. So, the people in this town didn't want you, realistically speaking, to have this power, but in the real world, you won. So, you need to do the right thing. And at the last meeting, you know, Mr. Pernell, you said, you're pushing for Jack as the road agent. I think those are your exact words, you're pushing him to get that position. You know, that's, that's not fair, that's not right. First of all, hiring as per RSA 91 is a non-public decision. And, you know, you basically contaminated the job pool. I mean, there could really be two people in this town that voted for having you appoint, because maybe they wanted to apply for the position. Maybe they were ready to toss their name in the hat, thinking they can get the position. Now you just said, no, we're gonna, you're just gonna hire Jack. And then you said, well, he must be the right person, because the people voted for him, time to time again. Well, yeah, and I wish we could have still voted for him, and he would have been the road agent. So if you had every intention of keeping him as the road agent, you should have just left it the way it was, and Jack would have still been our road agent. So, I need you guys to think about that. I mean, it was very clear when the fire chief, you guys put, I know it was a petition warrant article, but I know Mr. Lemire, you were part of that, you pushed for it, to have the police, I mean, fire chief as an appointed position, and immediately, boom, it's you hire a fire chief. And there was not a question about it. So, you need to go through the process, you need to post it, in the normal ways you post it, and you need to take applications, and Jack's the best guy, I hope he is, well, then he has it, but you have to at least go through the process now, because you fought so hard for it. And it's the right thing to do. Because the people that voted against it, in my opinion, clearly wanted to continue to make the decision for Jack, like myself, and again, I want to make that clear. I believe Jack's the right guy, but my opinion means nothing right now. It's in your hands. So please, do the right thing, and you need to go, you need to create a job description. You were talking about an engineer, right, put money in the budget for engineer, so maybe the road agent could include some, somebody with an engineer experience, they're enough to sub out, I mean, you want to bring stuff in-house. This is the thing now, maybe take some other things for spending money on, and incorporate it as part of the job description, and go through the same process as you did with the fire chief, which that was pretty elaborate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Hearing none, closed public input. Alright, next is selectmen reports. Do we have any reports anybody want to offer?
No, only happy birthday to our road agent.
Yeah, happy birthday, Jack.
Happy birthday, Jack, yes.
And 25 more years, please. There was no items moved for consent, there was no other business. The next we have is a non-public session, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we go into non-public.
91A3, code Roman, move to...
There it is. Under, under RSA 91-A, colon, 3, section 29A.
Okay. We're gonna go in, well, we're gonna vote for a second, but just, we will not, we'll be coming out of non-public just to adjourn, so, you know, for that, we'll take a night at this point, but roll call vote, Mr. Bork?
Yes.
Mr. Lemire?
Yes.
Mr. Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Pernell, yes. So again, we're, we'll go into non-public, we'll come out just to go in, to adjourn, so everyone have a good night, and we'll see you at next meeting.